Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order on Monday, March 7, at 2:00 PM here at the town hall at 6:00 PM. Before we start, I'd just like to congratulate the two candidates for getting elected. Danny, you're going for reelection and you as a new elector, like whatever you want to call him anyway. So welcome to here.
Thank you.
And hopefully we'll have a good year and you'll enjoy it.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Summate.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next item of business is the minutes of Tuesday, February 22. Do you have any additions or corrections for the minutes as presented? If not, somebody make a motion to approve the February 22 minutes.
No more.
Second, seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now we have the organization meeting on March 1. Do we have any additions or corrections to those minutes as presented? If not, a motion to accept the minutes of March 1. I think the organization meeting. Who will make the motion?
I'll give you that.
Second, anybody second it?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Anyway, Danny, I talked with Danny and he is not coming today, but he thought the bill so.
Yeah, okay, first of all, on the FEMA meetings, we did not have a meeting today. Catherine Solobin from FEMA is waiting for Michelle to finish up some things, hopefully by Monday and next week. And then, once that is done, then we can go into the mitigation discussions on the culverts that we're trying to replace by mitigation. With regard to the covert on Ledge Road that should be replaced ordinarily by FEMA, I talked to Ron Bell today and sent him an email. He says by Thursday, he hopes to have the hydraulics, he hopes to visit the site tomorrow and have the hydrology by Thursday. Let's hope that that gets done, the sooner the better. With regard to excess waste permits that I need action on, I have Chavez Excavation, St. Pierre Sand and Gravel, Velco, the power company, they all mostly power equipment and telephone poles all around. And Cardinal Logistics have all asked for excess waste permits. But I need a motion to issue them and to allow me to issue them.
Summate.
Second. Any other discussion?
What about the Cardinal Logistics?
Do you have something?
They have just all sorts of shipping. They just call themselves Cardinal Logistics.
Just one of the workplaces.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And then with regard to the truck bid status for the new or for a new replacement truck, I sent the a very short notice to Vermont Journal today that will be printed in the paper next Wednesday. The bid is, the bid package that will go out is all set to go out. I just need the email addresses from Danny to send them out to the bidders. So the idea is we'll send it to specific people, but it'll also be published in the newspaper for anybody else to see. And the notice in the newspaper simply says, we need bids. If you want to know what it is we're looking for, call me or Danny and we will send you the specifics. So that we don't spend $500 on an ad that we don't need to. Because no, we hardly ever get anything out of the newspaper anyway on the trucks anyway. We get it on Smudge. So that's it, as far as the work they are doing. They're going to try to, when it gets a little bit cool at night, if it's going to freeze at night, they're going to try to get rid of as many ruts as they can when it starts to harden. That may mean that Danny is either working into the evening, if it's going to get cold enough early enough, or working in the early morning, not working regular hours, but just trying to get at it when it is amenable to be kind of put back together. And so that's one of the things they want to work on. And the other thing is the, other than that, that they're trying to keep people from thinking that Volkswagen is completely gone. And then finally, if they get through all that, they want us to continue to cut the trees on stage road up toward the end toward, well, near, well, toward the end of the road, there's the ditch is almost non-existent. And they're trying to reestablish that. We sent notice to all the homeowners from from the end down to near to the James.
Remo's West.
Yeah, Molesby South. So all of those, all the way down to Molesby South. And I haven't had any, that was a month ago that we sent notice that we're going to do it. And I haven't heard any complaints about it. And I don't think there would be because if you've been on that road, you know it needs to be drained. It isn't draining now, so it's a lot of very bad parts. So that's what they're working on. And I think that's it for the report from Danny.
Okay. Clip and Treasure, I don't think there is anything.
The only thing I have on them is that I have for you, and I gave each one of you this letter. It's on the letterhead. I have it here. This is the one I'd like everybody to sign, which if you could pass that around if anybody agrees. And that is authorizing me to be the person who administers and does have a project manager for that project. And I do want to just lightly discuss that. It is about $11,000 in total cost. There is roughly $8,000 in grant and $29,000, $8,000 in grant. $2,900 is the amount that Patrick Cooper Moon would have to pay. Patrick and I, I have talked to Patrick today. He would like to discuss this whole project at the next meeting with regard to perhaps participation with the town in his share. And anything else with regard to repair of Hinkley Brook in that area along Dottie's house and Patrick Cooper Moon's house. I think that would be a good discussion to have at that time. And so that's where that stands. We don't have to make a final decision on anything with regard to the grant until it comes back. And I don't know how quick the turnaround is, but I would figure that it would be up for discussion in any case at the 21st. Hopefully having the grant agreement in hand so that you can see the grant agreement and we can go through that. But that's where it stands. So Patrick is expecting to be able to discuss it then. And Dottie may add some discussion on that too if she wants. So I think we should set it for the hearing.
Does everybody know what we're talking about? The creek, taking work where it runs through.
I know it, but I don't know the details, what's going on there.
Well, what's happened is that with the flood of July, or what we don't call it, it's taken out this, if you want to go there, there's these rock walls and the water runs between them.
Yep.
And obviously it eroded, so the rocks have fallen in. So there's dirt there now. And that has to be repaired. Okay. They came down to look at it and as according to what Bill has indicated to us is that the only one to get grant money was Patrick. Dottie can't for whatever reason.
I'll explain that.
They don't, maybe you know better than I do. But anyway, so they're going to give some money to fix a portion of it, not the whole thing.
So it's not in the right of way? It's not in the right of way, what the?
I don't know.
I don't think it's in the right of way.
I don't think it's in the right of way.
There's no right of way.
It's back behind his house.
Okay.
It's across Dottie's house.
Yes.
Okay, what NICS by law is allowed to do is to make repairs of the road or damage to stop the erosion if it's threatening a structure. The only, they say, their finding was in the eight sites they looked at, the only place that a structure is being threatened by the damage done to the, to the, these walls and other places all over town that we looked at. The only place that a structure is threatened to fit their definition, it has to be so close to the area, et cetera, et cetera, is Patrick's. And that's the only one they will do. So it isn't a question of arguing with them, it's a question of thinking then for repairing just one spot and then seeing what we can do with with the others in that area. That's my opinion. That's my opinion. And I have to say this right up at the top. I'm an interested party because with the hydraulics and hydrology, we changed culverts to a bigger size to save our road. And we've done that. And we probably saved 80 or 90 or $100,000 in this last storm of Hinkley Brook Road. Because it could have taken out everything by my house all the way down, you know, a quarter mile like it did last time that I agreed, that's how much water came down. So we saved spending all that money. But what we are doing is sending more water down the creek that is not, and we're not offending the walls down that creek. So is there any moral obligation to help those people that are down the creek? What I did on my own is did a lot of moving a rock and bringing a rock hand by hand and protect all around my house. Not on the other side, but all around my house. And so I feel pretty comfortable with what I did by hand at my house. anybody downstream of any of these creeks in the going future, every time you have an H and H, you're going to get a bigger covert upstream. And I talked to the state. The state doesn't understand the situation or doesn't know how they could fix it. But they're requiring more and more larger structures and without any mitigation for the people down below. That's what's happening. But that's, so that's why I don't want to get too involved in the discussion when you guys have the discussion myself, because I'm an interested party, maybe in the future, if I suffer something like the damage that Dottie has to.
Can I ask who's going to do the work?
Yeah, it'll be designed, it'll be designed by the NICS. And they will then, we will then, the bidding, taking their design, it'll be bid out like we do any other project. We'll handle all the bidding, rewarding the bids and the project.
Bill, should we have a discussion with Patrick before we sign this?
I don't think so. No, no, because in order to get the grant, we need to do this. This is my opinion. We want to get the grant. We can always refuse the grants. So, but the grants, this paper we're starting to get going because we only have.
I just think we ought to have an understanding with Patrick as to what's going to happen before we go in, go home, paying for the grant.
No, I please don't delay the application for the grant. We can always refuse the grant. But if we don't apply, if we're too late applying for it, we're not going to get it. And he saw the Michael point of it told me that. You've got to do this as soon as possible.
Yeah, I don't say any, I don't say any wrong, Joe. Because it doesn't obligate us to do anything other than just to get the grant.
It's just like FEMA grants. If FEMA gives us the grant on Ledge Road and we don't like it, we don't have to take it.
And then we'll have Patrick come in here at the meeting on the 21st. We can discuss the whole thing.
So I just need to get clarification. So we have, we are fairly confident that we're going to receive an $8,000 grant that we haven't yet applied for.
Yes.
And Patrick is willing to pay the $2,900?
Say again?
$2,900 would be Patrick's here and he's willing to do that.
Yes.
Yes.
And when I send this, after you sign this, when I send this all in the morning, I'll send you all the complete package. It's only like 11 pages. It is, it's a big one.
This problem has happened to these properties multiple times.
Oh, yeah.
And I think I may be an interested party too because I believe Bill was one of the eight properties that they came to look at. Bill's property.
Yeah, Bill's was looked at too. And next door to him was looked at, at the P. Post Creek we looked at. We looked at places out, Townsend Road, at the very end of Townsend Road. All of them set, they set.
So what am I missing? If we apply for the grant, they get it, there's eight parties.
No, 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 no.
Right, right, right. But eight interested parties, that could be.
They've already been rejected.
No, no.
They've already been rejected. It's only one party.
Right. But, right. But if they're, if the eight parties are somehow connected to all of this, why aren't they getting together and dividing the bill by eight?
Because the reason is that.
Oh, I understand. Right, but.
That's what that's.
I think that would be the easiest solution for them.
I know, but if you're getting the money from the stage or the fest, where else is giving the money?
Then those eight parties should have a handshake agreement saying, in good hands, we're going to, I'll pitch in. Am I missing something?
The, I think the only part we're missing possibly, Rich, is that it's Patrick's wall that physically needs to be replaced. It doesn't.
So just the wall, there's no powder in the wall?
It's a wall. And if you saw it, the water removed like a hole, either some of total or part.
I'll have to.
One of the problems with Patrick is it was washed in two different places. They're only covering one place.
Okay.
So one place is going to be the same as it is right now.
And they've had to pay for it to be fixed before.
Right. You need to get that in so you can understand the form.
Yeah, yeah.
So we need a motion, I guess, to sign this, to apply for the grant, I guess.
Yeah, to authorize me to be the, all those people in the.
I have to, I make a motion to authorize Bill to sign the grant application for a new project on Hinkley Brook. Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Say aye? Opposed? Rick just signed that, that's a long. Okay, the next item is the legal opinion of the GDS and the necessary eligibility. I know you're here, Jack. But we can't talk about it tonight, other than just set the time for executive session sometime next. We'd like to do it at 5:00 on the 22nd of March.
As I say, I'm, right now, I'm the only incumbent member of the board because everybody else has either knew or been elected and we haven't met. We have meetings in March 10. So I can't respond to the request. I've sent a note to all the members after the March 10 meeting. See if we'll put that on the agenda and try to get a response to you at that time. I wouldn't mind, because I sent you our response that we get from our council, I wouldn't mind seeing a copy of the response you get from yours. It seems like fair and these responses are public documents. But beyond that, that's the only request I would have moving this forward because I think it's important for everybody to see what the cards are that are being laid out on the table. I hope that seems reasonable.
But at some point, we need to have this executive session.
Oh, I completely agree about the executive session. This is not, not, it's, it's at least your least. And it's also our collective opinion of the advice we got from the agency of it. And I want to do that, but I, we'd like to either tonight or in the next day or so, get a copy of whatever you have received from the council so that everybody, you know, the two lawyers can we see it in advance of the executive session?
I have it, I can send it to you. Basically, he says, I'm not giving an opinion.
That's fine, that, we'll take that.
We won't, but you can.
So, you know, we, the two lawyers and everybody's something to talk about.
That's fair enough. All right. Just let us know when, when you know. And if you can't do it at 5:00, we'll do it at 5:30 or another day, we'll set.
I think we all feel this is the priority and we'll want to get this done. Again, can't speak for the board, they haven't assembled yet, but I'm pretty sure they'll all agree to that.
I'm sure.
All right.
What about the lawyer that we need to confirm who the lawyer is for?
Oh, yeah. Who's your attorney?
Pietro Lynn is our lawyer. We've also been advised by Larry Slayson from time to time. But on this matter, because it's an SKU matter, I would assume it would be. Also, I don't know if you guys have dealt with Larry or not, so.
Larry's a con from here.
Yeah, then best that we stick with Pietro instead of put Larry's.
So where is he out of, you know?
He's out of Burlington, he would probably, you would probably catch an electronic thing.
No, sorry, he's not local, I mean, he's, he's not.
He's from, he's from New Haven, but he's.
Yeah, but I mean, his office is in Burlington. Thank you. Committee reports. Cemetery, nothing new. Highway, nothing new. Parks, the only thing that is that the logging has been completed and they're going to get the wood out when they can. That's about it. One thing, one other thing, I did talk to Mike Fields and they did apply for the second grant.
Okay.
Okay. And whether they're going to get it, that is another story, but they did, they did apply. So the application is in the hands of whoever that grantor is. So hopefully we get. Personnel?
No.
Good, I'm sorry.
Tim Morton's, they are done cutting.
Yes, I know that.
They are done drabbing. They are not anywhere near done with the park. They're not going to declare it open to people walking in it, probably, according to Tim Morton this afternoon, till early May. We're now in early March, so in early May because everything's got to melt, then everything's got to solidify. Then they're going to clean all the trails and make sure nothing is dangerous. Then they're going to open it.
Okay.
And they're not going to open it, probably be be early May. It's not going to be fast. I've already told Louisiana that we will not open it until Tim Morton says it should be open, because Tim told me the other, two, a week ago, that it's going to be a while. And they, and we just can't have people on the trails because if they get hurt and we have a problem. So it's probably going to be early May.
They're going to put a sign, Jack.
Pardon me?
They're going to have the signs, trail clothes.
The signs are going to remain up until, till Tim, till the forest opens.
Okay. All right.
And I can send all that up to you guys. I don't know if I passed that on.
You did.
Okay. Personnel, I think Bill said you guys are going to handle this then?
Yes.
Okay. My feeling, Sam, is that I don't know, maybe it's not necessary, maybe you guys can discuss it and bring it back to the board. But if we do have a harassment case, it definitely we do, we did, why don't we just call an attorney and VLCT and let them handle it rather than trying to do it as a select board?
I'm not quite understanding your question, Joe.
I said, instead of having something in our personnel policy where the select board will handle a harassment, we just turn it over to the attorney and VLCT and let them deal with it and not let the board get on.
Oh, I see. So you're saying why this training is about turning it over to the select board if we get a case?
Well, that's what I understood.
It's my understanding and we obviously need to sort out some things. Bill and I had a conversation about that this afternoon when I learned that he had run into a situation where it created a lot more administrative work than we thought, than Kathy and I thought it was going to. We thought it was going to be a simple matter of getting in touch with this person at passive. They would direct us to a catalog of training programs. We registered, sort of like we registered for the VLCT training, it'd be over. That is not what Bill experienced. So, Bill, I suggest that Kathy and I just take it back over and we'll work with our consultant from passive VLCT to sort it out. My understanding of the training is that it is a preventive measure. It is to educate us on what the meaning of harassment is, what our actions and behaviors can contribute to someone determining that they have been harassed either on the employment level or the sexual level and that it is a way of preventing lawsuits rather than handling lawsuits. But I will certainly get clarification. We will both get clarification on that specific question when we get back in touch with Bill. That's a great question.
Building committee?
big one, I'm saying. No, it's not working, but everybody's there. The other people that should come in, I imagine, I haven't talked with them as soon as they come in. With regard to the elevator, Mike Rodriguez did his work and opened the ceilings in both the basement and first floor so that they can be looked at. James and James did part of the plumbing by removing that heater that we never ever used in the, that was to the left of the door downstairs. Just, you'll now see that there's a big hole there where it used to be. But we never, it was never turned on, been 20 years that Kim can remember, so why it was there, I don't know. And then with regard to the most important thing, the electricity. And this is all the pre bidding out stuff.
But did James, did he finish the whole project?
No. They didn't finish.
They didn't do it.
No, but I think that they want to deal with, with it. They need to get more information from, as I recall. Okay. And then with regard to the electricity, Green Mountain Power and Rick Han, who is with, you know, Leonard, hello. Leonard, hello, hello, Leonard. He will be here on Thursday at 10:00. If the building committee wants to be here. He's a meeting with Green Mountain Power at 10:00. He didn't invite everybody, but he said that if anybody wants to be here at the 10. The question is, what does that wire, what does the electricity look like underground? For a 100 amp building, it needs to be 200 amp, which doesn't mean you simply change it. You have to then bring in more wiring. This wiring to this building goes all the way over to behind the, is that the Barrett House?
Yes.
There's a transformer behind the Barrett, so it goes along the road here to just about around the museum and goes straight across the transformers over there. And if it's an underground wire and not in a casing, we have to dig the whole thing up and replace it. You got transformers right here. What he's going to talk to him is, and they're 50 feet away. Is that where we should go for the wire? And just abandon that whole thing where the electricity comes in now, bring it in this side. But, and by the way, the our power in an emergency through the generator comes from that side in. There's always, they're already big wire in the line, but we got to most likely put in a second one. Anyway, they're going to talk about that on Thursday. And again, all of this is in preparation to have it all done so that when you send out the bid for the elevator, everything will be ready for the contractor to put in the elevator, hook it up to electricity, not have to bother with the plumbing and not, and know what the framing is before they start to work on the thing. That's, all this work is eliminated. That's where we are with the elevator. And again, we're hoping to get the bid out by the end of this month. and have the project be done in May and June.
Meanwhile, how are we paying for these things? Bill, are we just paying for them out of our own cash and then we'll get, be reimbursed by the ARCA?
We have a hundred thousand, Barcom.
Oh, we have and haven't.
And what we, what we would have to do if they finished all the work in June and didn't give us thirty days to pay, we would have to take some money out of ours until the ARCA, the second...
Second.
Second thousand comes July first.
Okay.
Another question here?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Bill, right now, you've got only a hundred amp service, which is obviously not enough for this building. I hundred percent agree you need two hundred amp. I don't understand, if the power's coming from the transformer over here, what are you proposing, what are you suggesting would be done on the west side of the building? I don't understand that. I understand this...
The power also comes through that natural that's right out in front of here?
Yes.
As, as a branch?
Yes.
That is, and goes over to these transformers. So it's the same power, it's just a different branch.
And what do, what do the, where do the transformers go to for that?
I think they feed the, they probably feed the...
The inn, homestead, right.
The money to feed the church, do they? Well, I don't know that that's going to be a solution. But it's better to dig a two hundred feet of ground up to, to lay another ladder, which we would have to do there, because it's not in a tube.
It's not in a tube?
No.
What, what about the other end? Because most wired, we can fish from an end that's exposed and get...
Only if it's in a tube. Everything is underground. If it's, if it's in ground, if it's buried, dirt buried, you can't, you can't take it out.
You're saying it's in the soil?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm asking a question.
Yeah. In their case, their wire is sealed. It's not in a tube. That's the problem. When they first put it in, okay. When they first put it in, they buried the wire. Then they came back and for some of it, they, ten or eleven years later, they put some of it in the tube. Whether this is in a tube or not, no one knows.
Wow. Who did that work? What was he doing?
I don't know, the foundation, if they did all that, didn't they?
I don't, they just didn't believe in that.
No. No. We have all the plans, we have the plans, we have the plans with the tubes, we have the plans about the tubes, but then we don't have anything marked final. But Cooney Mountain knows everything. I mean, they, they, they had, they had to approve all this stuff and expect, expect it as well, so... We'll see what happens on Thursday.
Very surprising. Thank you for answering my question.
All this to try and be energy efficient.
I understand. Well, putting in a, an expensive, powerful elevator and heat pumps takes electricity, so of course we have to upgrade it, and that's the problem.
But it saves, saves on oil and, and...
Sure, but we have to rewire the building.
We'd be so happy if people could come up here and we can have a little bit of share.
You got it. Waste water committee? There was the final thing, the insurance policy had to be filed. That was done last week. I'm going to go check with Aaron and find out now if there's still anything left that we need to do. But we believe, Bill and I believe that they have all the now documents that they need. So I'm assuming that those starts sometime in the spring, start their waste water step. So that's where that goes. Other business? You know, okay. Public comment?
Just glad, and thanks to Susan, who let me know that you were discussing power three fifty issue about, about schools. And I was glad we got by, would be helpful by Kathy.
You know, I was just wondering, is it possible to just go ahead and add Jack to the distribution list for all our agendas? I mean, he wouldn't be necessarily interested in all of them, but he was on that, that list, the distribution list you have, Bill, I remember about thirty people or so you send out the agenda to.
Oh, I can send that to him, yeah. Put him on a meeting list.
You just add him to that major list.
It costs a lot of money, Jack.
We'll have to work that out.
Ask Dottie what she pays. No, I, I can put you on the meeting list.
Thanks, that was just...
That'd be good.
That would be real helpful.
All right, the next regular meeting here is Monday, March first?
No, I think it's on Tuesday, come to think of it, isn't it?
What, how old is it?
The twenty-first president.
That, oh, no, who is March?
Well, a minute ago...
President, President's been since February.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought, a minute ago, I heard Bill say that the executive session would be on... Oh, the twenty-second is the development review board.
Yeah, so anyway, so...
Okay, the twenty-fourth is the select board meeting, but the executive session is going to be before the development review.
Well, we don't know that yet. Jack has got to come up with...
I gotta find out when Pietro, probably when, when Larry or...
And then, just so you know, that we, you just said that the development review board will be continued from that to a date in, in April. I don't know the date in April, but it's, it's not going to be the twenty-second.
Okay. I think we just said to Jack that the executive committee would meet on the twenty-second.
No, no, we were saying the twenty-first.
Twenty-first. And, and this is all best effort, because I got a...
So it is the twenty-first?
It's the twenty-first, Jack. And you let us know what, if we can't, we'll have to have her. Get a, that we can all agree it be...
We'll talk, as they say.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I was confused on that.
I just wanted to remind everybody, though, that, that the twenty-second meeting is only appointments for the...
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, twenty, for the appointments for the tree ward and, and everything else. So if you know of anybody who wants to volunteer or anybody we need to get, please pick the word out, fill out a letter, and then you grab the news. I touched on it about volunteerism, so we need volunteers to fill some of these positions. So just keep that in mind.
Do we have a list of those positions?
I was going to try to get it done today, but I didn't. Bill, send it out. I will send out the list, and I'll send it out to...
So we still have...
To the meeting people, so you're...
Hogweed and fence watcher, are those still things? Are you going, what would you have for volunteers?
Well, there's a constable and tree warden and, you know, those kind of things. Well, the biggest, the biggest thing is we don't have anybody on the planning commission, and the planning commission has about seven or eight things to do by law, I mean, that they are allowed to do by law, if they just want to do. It's all the planning. Yeah. The sad part about it is that the planning commission basically has not functioned at all in the last year. They don't even have a chair, and it's, they're not doing what they're supposed to do. And having their regular meeting. So apparently, you're still having a difficult time finding people who want to serve that board, so...
It was just...
Yes.
Okay. So there's one person now?
But the two, two are going to resign or leave or leave.
Interesting.
Yeah. We're probably going to need three people. Yeah.
And who, Jack, while we're on the topic, who, who was selected to the school board?
Uh, I was elected because I was running, because I'm, I'm a carryover, anyway. We have Krista Gay, who's an attorney from Athens, actually attorney from a major New York firm, who is going to be on the, on our board. We have Lynn, Lynn's been on for a while, and she's a environmental educator. We have, we have me, we have Harding, we have Luis Manning, who is in Barnum and Simon's Westminster, and David Major, who a lot of people know already. And that's your, that's your elementary school board, at least until July. Speaking of volunteers, we're going to need at least one, maybe two, but at least one additional person probably. Wade is here, because we are anticipating, by seeing our articles and adding folks to replace the Westminster people who will be leaving this school. So if you're, what, if you're down punishment, you should serve on the planning board.
I tried to see you do a lot of volunteers. Do we have a motion for adjournment? Do we have a session? Okay, all want to say, or say aye?
Aye.
Both? All, thank you, everybody.